What we're gonna do this evening is I'm gonna first introduce our librarian, Michelle Bryan, who's gonna give you kind of a overview of what's going on with one at a public library, kind of a state of the state, state of the district speech. Then we're gonna introduce the candidates that we have for elections from the Board of Trustees, and then we'll have what I think is probably gonna be a fairly brief presentation about this year's budget and have opportunity for any question and answer clarification in the discussion of the bill. So with that, Michelle, would you like to go?
All right, well, thank you for coming out and visiting with us. A lot has gone on last year, a lot of really fun stuff. So I kind of tried to recap the year very quickly. Some of the great things we did, we had a program called Reading, Rainbow Reading, Rainbow Eating, which was a program to teach proper nutrition to kids. We cooperated with Cornell Cooperative Extension, we had them come in. They did little classes on nutritional eating, how to read food labels, all those kinds of things, and the kids got to cook, which they loved. They made some really interesting things, and what we found was that they really did try some new foods and healthy foods and had a better, more open attitude toward it once they prepared the food themselves, and you know, maybe someday they'll grow their own food, who knows? But they'll take this and they'll move forward, and we're gonna be doing that again. One of the really interesting things is we were picked out of the entire country, there were only five libraries that were chosen to do this, and we were one of them. We were able to bring over the kids from the fifth grade class from North Broad to come and have a Skype conversation with a park ranger from Denali State Park in Alaska. So it was live time, and the kids were introduced to sled dogs and learned a little bit about that, and they were able to ask questions of the ranger and have this connection with someone that was 3,000 miles away and learn a little bit about the state parks and, you know, kind of get that drive to go out there and experience and explore. Many of you may have come to the eclipse picnic this summer. Anybody come to that? Awesome. It was a fantastic time. I just found out this week that someone came from two hours away to participate because they didn't have any glasses left down there that they were... I hung on to mine tight until the day out so we'd have them for everybody. So about 1,000 people between that morning and that afternoon had come through to get glasses and to share and that experience, which was just phenomenal. And one of the best things I heard from that day was other people coming up to me and saying, "People did," and said, "This was wonderful. We loved having the community." It wasn't about necessarily the eclipse, but they loved having the community come out together and do something. And several people said that, so that's something to think about for the future. We also had the Women's Voices Program, which was wonderful, talking about women breaking barriers around this area, and there was a play and all kinds of interesting discussion and books that went along with that. We continue to have Pushing Limits, which was one of my favorite programs because it is a STEM program for adults in which you read some books that have a science theme in them, but are fiction books. And Jen Herzak, who is absolutely amazing, she's been doing programming with us for years and years, she's a professor at Kirkhamer College, and she does science experiments with adults. So the fun thing is that this is a nonjudgmental kind of sort of sideways of doing your science, where you get to just enjoy it and learn from it and experience it without worrying about what the outcome's gonna be. So many people are, you know, have that kind of standoffish feeling about science because they're a little afraid of it, you know, they don't understand it. But this is a way to learn it through discussion and experiences that, you know, I don't think you're gonna get in too many other places. We also have, and continue to have, and it's growing bigger and bigger, a lot of tutoring going on, looking around the library, 2:30 hits, and there's kids everywhere, and they're walking through the library looking for places to go to sit with their tutor, and we're quickly, yeah, we're running out of spaces for them. So that has grown tremendously. And in the coming year, we will be doing more of these types of programs. We're looking for opportunities to do that next big program with the community, so if anybody has any wonderful ideas, I'm listening. One of the things I was just coming up with, we are getting our equipment for the Idea Lab, which has some studio equipment, and so my thought was, well, let's take that and let's do an indie film festival. So we'll have the equipment, and so we'll take the year and try to teach people how to use the equipment, how to develop a film, draw and wherever we can go for help, I'm sure, and kids are constantly filming everything, so they can put that together and come up with some films, and I think it'd be a fun community event, and you can have adults do, you know, different categories, have kids do it as well, little kids, so I think it'd be a lot of fun, so we'll be working toward that. That's all I got for now, I think. We're...I think, any questions for me about that? Oh, dinosaurs, yeah, we just had dinosaur, a dinosaur dig, here just a few days ago for the kids when they were off of school. We brought in some paleontologists from a little bit downstate, they came up and they had, it was amazing, they had this, like, down to a science, no pun, but they had put tarp, a tarp that had gone through the whole room, and they brought in boxes of dirt so that the kids, once they had learned about, a little bit about, you know, how to do a dig and what they're looking for and the types of things that they find and where they find them and the names of different geodes and bones and different things, and I learned today, oh, I'm not gonna remember it now, but there is a special word for dinosaur poop. Anyway, it gets really hard and becomes like a stone. But they were digging all these things up, and they had a Tyrannosaurus head here that the kids could look at, and just, they brought the toe of one dinosaur that was, like, the toenail was about this big, so it gave the kids a concept of how, if that's the toenail, the dinosaur must be enormous. And then they had boxes of dirt that were salted with geodes and different fossils and things like that, so the kids learned how to delicately brush away the dirt and sift through and come up with their pieces, and then they had to put them on a chart to, you know, what are you looking at, what did you find? So it was, they were just so enthusiastic, they absolutely loved it, and they were getting their vegetables, their science with a side of fun, and didn't even hurt. So we're looking for lots, a lot of more opportunities like that, that are different programming, different things that we can bring into the library, so again, if you have any ideas about some fun things that you'd like to see us do here, my door's always open, so let me know. Okay.
Thank you very much, Michelle. And so we have three Board of Trustees, actually, they have seven members, and we have three vacancies coming up this year, and we have two of the candidates, one of them was unable to get out of a conflict that she had, Lillian White, who is returning, running for a second term as a Board of Trustee member. But we have a new person, relatively new in the community, but certainly has gotten his feet wet and he's gotten very active in the community in the time that he's been here, and now is willing to give up some of his personal time to help make sure we've got the best community library that we can put together. Gary Taylor, and Gary, I'd like you to introduce yourself and say a few words to...
Hi, I'm Gary Taylor. I'm the former Tim Hortons owner on Route 5 there before the restaurant closed, I'll say, or taken away. Before that, my wife and I, we were both teachers in the Buffalo area. We both had about 10 years of teaching experience. I'm a technology teacher, which a lot of you would remember as the old industrial arts classes, moved on to technology. I know Michelle mentioned STEM, that's basically what we taught in my classes. Sharon was a business teacher, and she spent 10 years doing that. Before that, I was in industry. I worked 12 years for New York State Electric and Gas at their Somerset Power Plant, which is on Lake Ontario, north of Buffalo, and I spent five years at Deppland Steel, working on steel products. My positions on those were instrumentation and control, that's kind of what I went to school for when I was younger. Became a supervisor for a group of 12 technicians at NiSEG, and worked there until management changes, things got bought out. So I've got a lot of experience behind me. I know in the paper they showed that I built houses, I've built six houses, five houses, remodeled three, just remodeled two apartment buildings in Oneida now. It's kind of a hobby of mine, and I kind of do it for fun, if you can believe that. It's kind of a fun thing that we do about every five years or so. For taking on the position, Pat nagged me for two years to do it. She knew about my experience in the back, and she's been after me for the last couple of years to get involved, and she finally twisted my arm enough, and I think it's a great opportunity for me. It allows me to stay in touch with some of the things that I love, which is children. Being a teacher for 10 years, we mostly high schoolers, but middle schoolers too, gets me back in touch with, I'm hoping it gets me back in touch with what they're doing and what they're up to. It allows me, because you're building a new building, it allows me to use my skills in home building and remodeling, hopefully help the board make some decisions that otherwise they might not have somebody on that can do that type of stuff. And it just allows me to stay in touch with the community. We are not, Sharon and I are not from this area, we are from the Buffalo area. When we were back there, I was the head of the local Elks Club, 1478 in Lancaster, and was involved with politics and everything else that was there. So when we came here, we really didn't know anybody, didn't know how to get involved, and so slowly, we've been slowly getting involved. Sharon's part of the youth board, she's on the youth board, she's also a member of the chamber. I'm getting into the library, I attend all the council meetings, common council meetings because I want to know what's going on with the city, and so we're trying to get involved as much as we can to know what's going on, for one to help us with our business, which is redeveloping property here in Oneida, and just be a part of the community. Any questions?
I'm in the right meeting, aren't I? It's the hearing thing, right?
Right.
Glad you're here.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Here recently returned from the other side of the world is Patricia Alba, who is a returning Board of Trustee member, and Pat...
Thanks, Rick, and thanks to Gary for agreeing to run. We're real happy to have him, and we hope he'll get elected. It's not easy to get people to run for these volunteer positions, and we've got a couple of former trustees with us here tonight, and they probably had to be begged, probably Chuck did, I don't know, Sue's been on the very beginning, so nobody had to beg her. But Gary spoke a lot because he's a new, he's a new guy and an unknown entity. I've been around for many, many terms, I've been on the board for a very long time, and it's because I love the library and I think the library is very, very important. And all I'm going to say is that I totally agree with this Andrew Carnegie quote. Andrew Carnegie, as you know, thought it was very important to have libraries, so he financed libraries to any community in the United States in the early 1900s that wanted one. Well, Canastota Library is a Carnegie library, and there are many others that you probably know about, I suppose, I, eh, I gotta throw in. Oneida turned it down. At that time, the women couldn't vote, the men of Oneida turned it down because they thought it would be too expensive to maintain, so there you go. Yeah, okay. So Andrew Carnegie, and most of us believe that, a library operates any other one thing a community can do to benefit its people. It is a never-failing spring in the desert. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Pat. And I didn't introduce myself, I'm Rick Chiselle, I'm the president of the Board of Trustees, and we will open up and have opportunity for public comment as well as question and answer, but I thought I would just highlight a couple of pieces of information in regard to next week's election and budget vote. So the budget vote, as we take great care and try to make sure people understand, is only for the annual operating budget for the library. And due to the law that brought our library district into being, it is an opportunity for the public to say yea or nay in regard to proposed expenses. The board works very hard to put together a budget that we think is responsible and reasonable and can still provide the very best library services as possible for the community, but then it's up to the community to actually agree and say, yes, we're willing to invest in our community as well and approve the budget. So we have, this year, we have a slight increase, which is under 5%, but actually, under 5% is still, it exceeds the rate of inflation, and we're very sensitive to that. But there are a couple of factors that really figure very prominently in the reason for that particular increase. First thing is that people should appreciate or need to understand in providing a service or a service industry, about almost two-thirds of our cost are for personal services. And so the operating share of the budget, one-third of the budget, and two-thirds for our personal services. And here at the library, we have 13 part-time staff, two full-time staff. Nine of the 13 part-time staff are actually minimum wage employees. And many of you are aware that the minimum wage for New York State had been increasing 70 cents a year. If you look at some of the materials that we put out for you, you can see that the rate of payment for the majority of our employees back in 2013 was, was it 7...
725.
725. And it is continuing to increase, and if we could afford to pay people more, we would. The staff that are still receiving, many of them receiving minimum wage, are professional staff. They have to have substantial amount of training, and it's valuable for them, for their experience to actually do their job. It's not a walk-in and just, you know, get the minimum wage. If you look at some of the statistics that we've provided you, the Oneida Library, although it is serving the largest population here immediately in central New York and is one of the large libraries in the overall Mid-York District, we are the least expensive of any of our neighboring libraries.
I don't say no. I come from Redwood, New York, we don't even have a library. Only person has it in their house, and we're all volunteers, we all volunteer, nobody gets paid anything. And I wanted to ask a question at the end of all of our sales, May and October, since I've been friends of the library for probably 30 years, if not that long, and I wanted to know if there was a way you set up when the books are here, and I see all those trucks going out with all those, out in the hallway, and I don't know where they're going and whether they're giving away or selling them, but I'd like to mention, I would confuse them.
I think we've got a deal for you. Actually, as we go through the, you know, reviewing circulation, and there's a very, there's a fair amount of science to this, so...
We don't have one in Sylvan Beach either, that's why I'm now...
Well, you do have a library in Sylvan Beach, it's here.
I know that, I come here all the time.
And...
Sure, they show up.
That's great. So we are taking books, if a book hasn't been withdrawn in, once in four years or something, is it?
It depends.
It depends, but books that aren't getting utilized, we don't have enough space for everything that we want, they're ready to go. And we have the friends will bring in books, you know, to sell them. We try, the friends have been very generous for the library in supporting and finding ways to, you know, support scholarships or other expenses that the library has. But we end up with a whole bunch of books that we don't know what we can do with. And so if you've got a place for them...
I can tell my people I've seen that.
We can, I guarantee you, we can get you way more books than you're gonna have space for, but we...
No, she's a pretty good helper, she never know what she's got. She gives in with the library.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
I'm really glad to hear that. But other than free libraries in somebody's house, here in central New York, we're the lowest-cost operating facility, and our costs, even if you look at some of our neighboring libraries, our costs are very, very competitive. And the other side of that equation is, you remember, I said that we, you know, we spend a great deal of our budget is on personal services. We're open 58 hours, I wish we were open longer, but obviously, there's a direct correlation between the number of hours that you're opening and what your operating expenses are when you have to have staff to see it. But if you compare the hours of operation for our library to our neighbors, again, we very favorably compare to the other libraries, even though we are less expensive to operate than any of those libraries. Even Vernon, which is a relatively small library, it only serves 500 people, we are considerably less than Vernon in terms of operation per person in our population, so...
Actually, Rick, it's a little more than 1,000 at Vernon.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Like 1,100. If anyone got the sheets with the statistics, that actually has the correct information. I didn't want you to be dislocated here.
It's good. And hopefully, PAC 99 will get that squared away. So the other single increase unusual this year in our personal services is that we're anticipating having to make the transition from operating this facility to the new facility, and we had, from the very beginning, one of the serious design considerations was to make sure that the new facility would not require many, many more staff to operate. And we've anticipated that we're going to have to add a part-time maintenance person because it is a larger facility, the grounds are much more substantial, that we're gonna have to be taking care of. And so in this year, we've included adding that part-time maintenance person. So that's another increase in the budget that won't be happening year in and year out.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do you have an actual date for this new building already? Because it's been, what, five years at least?
Well, actually, it's been 10 years.
10, I was seeing like, because I know I've been back and forth, and I'm not far from Watertown, so I already got them going and books.
Well, if you can take some books to Watertown, we'd be happy for that, too.
Well, they already know that, so I...
Okay, so we do, we are, you know, we're through the litigation issues that had occurred, and we expect that we will be breaking ground sometime this summer, and that we will be, you know, in the library sometime next summer.
And it would be on the Main Street there.
On Main Street, yes.
Near the museum.
So we're very excited about that. And because also we're in this transition year, we're expecting that we're gonna have to spend a little bit more in terms of our utility cost while we have responsibility for two different buildings, and so that's an increase. But if you look at the overall increases, again, I mentioned, it's under 5% in terms of the tax increase, and that's a figure that some people may be concerned about because it's, you know, greater than the rate of inflation, but if you look at what the increase has been since 2013, our rate of increase in terms of tax dollars is less than 2%, so averaged over the course of those years. So again, I think we've been very responsible in terms of our cost, in terms of our operation, and we expect to continue to be that way going forward with the new library. Any other questions or comments, or you don't have to ask a question, you can make a two-minute speech if you would like.
A matter mostly questions, anyway.
Well?
No.
For that, any trustee members, did I miss anything?
Did we have to sign in anyplace?
Not for today.
Not for that? I mean, all our other meetings, we all signed in.
Ah, yeah, just as a reminder, so it's next Tuesday is Election Day, and the polls will be open here at the library from 12 noon to 9:00 PM. And people who are registered voters, who live in the Oneida Public Library District, and that is the same boundaries as the Oneida City School District, are eligible to vote, and we hope that as many people as possible will get in and vote and support their community.
I think a point that should be made is how important our library is not only to our community, but especially to that segment, our students in our community. And with all the challenges faced by the youth in our community, having a first-class library is, certainly offers a lot of advantages here to help, as you can see from the statistics. We have a population here in Oneida that is, you know, 54% of our students are considered economically disadvantaged. Our reading proficiency rates are low relative to the state average. Our graduation rate is lower than what we would like it to be, and we have one of the largest student populations in Madison County. The library will play a very important role in helping our students succeed and to help bring Oneida up to the level where it needs to be. So I couldn't let that go without make, when people are voting, I hope that people think long-term here and think how important it is for our community to continue to rebuild from our students.
I think that's a great point, Brad, and it also, it reminds me, and Michelle was giving some highlights of some of the programs and activities, one of the very longstanding programs here at the library is the Summer Reading Program, and that's another area where the Oneida Public Library really, really shines. And if you take a look at our performance compared to all of the other libraries in the Mid-York, there are 43 libraries in the Mid-York District, Oneida Public Library is number two, and just short of Utica's library in terms of the number of visits people come in for the Summer Reading Program. We are head and shoulders above any of the other districts in the area in terms of the number of kids coming in and participating in that Summer Reading Program, something I'm very proud of, and we know in working with the school district how valuable it is for... number of kids coming in and participating in that, in that Summer Reading Program, something I'm very proud of. And we know in working with, with the school district, how valuable it is for the kids to keep up their reading interest and keep involved and learn that both as a pleasure and as a, you know, supplement for what they need for their education. Very important in, in helping to make sure that the next generation is well-prepared and it's something we're very proud of. So we go right from the very youngest all the way through offering what I would like to, you know, what we often term as lifelong learning at the library and opportunities for lifelong learning. I know, looking at this group, you're, you're people that are not in the, well, libraries are just for books and borrowing books. Libraries are absolutely essential for their community well-being. It's the forum where all different walks of life can meet, where everybody has access to lifelong learning. There's no other resource comparable to the library and it's one of those essentials for every vital community to have. And if we want to continue to be a growing and vital community, we need to have a good, healthy and operating library that really serves our public.
Well, another question.
Sure.
I've gotten some surveys and I don't know where they're coming from or what the reason for them are, but the survey, they're asking if, is it possible for the libraries themselves all over, we've become computerized and no books? I don't like that idea.
It's not going to happen.
I would rather have a book in my hand anytime.
It's not, it's not going to happen and, I mean, people, and many people like reading electronically and it's convenient for them to do that. But when you look at our circulation, about 90% of the circulation, people are taking books out, they're reading the books and they want the books, they prefer the books to, you know, to electronic reading.
And let me just add that when computers and personal computers became, you know, became all over the place, everyone said paperless office, we're going to have a paperless office and you're going to, go look at my office. There's nothing but paper in there.
I work with a telephone company, 120 operators on computers.
Yep.
They're fine when they're working, when they go down.
No, they don't, yeah.
You have money going out the door.
But I really believe that people still like to put their hands on something and know it's, you know, I have this and I can refer back to it and I know it's.
I heard my family, they'll read to their children now and I like that.
Yeah, it's a great bonding moment.
And at least in regard to the new facility, one, one thing I want people to be thinking of, be aware of, so I've lived in this community almost all my life. I was here before this library was built and from the time this library was built, our city hall was just over across the corner, across, behind Choo Choo Charlie's restaurant. It was a brick building, long gone, that's where the city hall was. Our police station was down on Phelps Street, that's gone, disappeared, no longer there.
The hospital.
Our hospital is moved from across the street up to Route 5 and has grown, you know, the extended care facility, both two beautiful facilities, serving this public. If you, if you had something that would be considered a publicly accessible gym or physical physit, it was the gym at the Presbyterian Church was the, was the community rec resource at that time. So all of those things have changed. Now we have that wonderful Y facility that serves this community so well. All of those things have changed and have grown. They're all vital parts and essential parts of our community. But it's time for us to have a facility that really can serve the full public and serve it safely and effectively and we're very excited about that.
It doesn't have anything to do with the budget vote?
Yeah.
But it has nothing to do with the budget.
The operating budget.
The operating budget's completely separate.
That decision was made by the taxpayers three years ago with a good, strong decision.
And this is the first increase in, this is the fourth year, right?
Well, so actually, we did increase last year, too. So this is the second increase, but it's the second increase.
This is this year.
Yep.
The new budget is going to be a slight increase.
But there were three years.
Yeah, three years, it was a second.
Neither one of them gets something.
Okay, if there aren't any questions, I'd be very grateful for people joining up tonight. Thank you for your questions and for your attention. And as I said, next Tuesday, 12 noon, to 9 o'clock here at the library. Sue.
And bring your neighbors.
And bring your neighbors.
And if you have any friends who are inbound by all means between now and Monday, get them an absentee ballot right here, take it to them, get it filled out and bring the real ballot back because all of those votes are very important.
Absolutely.
Do you have Susan, Sharon?
Excuse me?
Do you have Susan, Sharon?
No.
Is there a possibility that someone could make sure that there is at least.
Susan, Sharon, I talked to her on the phone.
Is it possible that someone could make sure there's at least one letter to the editor between now and the vote stressing some of these points that we've talked about with this small group here for the people who aren't listening and aren't thinking and are following all kinds of crazy ideas?
All right, one. Would you thank you?
About the fact that.
Thank you so very much. We really appreciate it.
This is the first increase.
Steven and, you know, I'd hope you could send some to meet everybody. I'll give the reminder.
And especially that it has all to do with this, it has nothing to do with the new library.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.